Go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with our pledge and Commissioner Davis will go to our prayer.
Our pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight thanking you for the many blessings you've given us. We ask, your Lord, that you watch over us tonight. Let us make wise decisions that will further our community in a better way. We ask that you guide, lead, and direct us in all we say and do before we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Welcome everybody out tonight. I know, all over the place. I feel like I've moved. I don't know. Somebody's moved these.
Well, maybe me when we had the baby shower.
Oh, okay. I'm just off kilter. I'm like, mm. Okay. First item is approval of the minutes.
Make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion second. Further discussion. Those in favor saying "Bye-bye." Post same. Motion passes. Next item, bills.
Make a motion when you pay bills?
Oh, second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Those in favor saying "Bye-bye." Post same. And then motion passes. Okay, first item is under new business is water main from East 8th to East 10th.
Yes, Bigger Staff called today. Actually, it was your board. State has approved the plans as of today. I told them to go and proceed to get a bid spec put together and hopefully we'll have that here for next month's meeting to start advertising.
Okay, so we don't need to...
No, we need to review, make sure everything's...
Approve it. What? Did they send you some? I thought they sent the bid documents today. Was that not in the email?
Well, maybe. I haven't looked at my emails. It's definitely what you have to call. I don't have on that.
Came from Terry Humphries. No, that's...
It's not there, but I don't know.
That's referring for approving it. Bigger Staff board. They sent me a bunch of stuff.
At your request, please find enclosed for bid process. If you have any questions, call. Okay, there's the letter. I think the state has approved it.
Got the map. It's got drawings.
No, it's got the drawings and all the language is all we need. We can go ahead and proceed to bid out now.
I'd like to go ahead and get that in for motion. Maybe provided that this...
Okay.
Make the motion, go ahead and advertise, provided this, all these documents are correct. Is that okay?
Yes.
I moved.
Second.
That way, just save us a month because we've been long enough on this one.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Those in favor saying "Bye-bye." Post same. Passes. Next item is the fire station generator bid. This is when we got the FEMA grant on, that David and then we're working on. We had three bidders. Taylor TE here local was $22,479. H&amp;E Electric, also here local, was $33,450. And then bid three is Canton Electrical Services out of Henderson at $13,500.
Wow, that's a big difference in prices.
And we have been going over... Grad is, of course, administering this grant for us, so they've been working on the documents and everything. And that's what we've been biking forth for the last month. And they said Canton is a large reputable contractor, does his stuff day in and day out every day.
That just seems like such an odd read bids. Did they miss something or do you think they...
He says they...
Is that with the power generation girl?
That's installed. Because scope of work is to provide and install a fixed 25 KW natural gas generator and automatic transfer switch, install electrical and natural gas connections as needed, install a concrete pad for the generator equal to or higher than the building foundation to ensure it's out of the floodplain, install bollards to protect from theft and damage vehicle, and provide all required permits.
Wow. It just seems so odd that they have that...
Well, that's why I didn't bring this last month because...
You want to make sure everything's right.
It was a big difference. I say Grad's gone over with the fine-tooth comb.
I guess when I make a motion, we accept Canton's bid.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Those in favor saying "Bye-bye." Post same. And motion passes. Next item, we'll open the floor because I'm sure you probably would like to get out of here.
Hey, son. Appreciate y'all taking time out here tonight to hang out with me just for a few minutes. Got some slots here. My name is Matt Culver. Work with ICT. We're just in Bowling Green, Kentucky. Took me all about 40 minutes to drive here, the town road. We do IT and cybersecurity. We also have our own data center that's in Bowling Green. So like if you guys sign up with services, all of your backups would be in our secure site in Bowling Green. We built it a couple of years ago when COVID first hit and we made it tornado-proof. And we were able to prove that when the tornadoes hit Bowling Green, we were fine. It hit all the infrastructure all the way around us, but we've got redundant generators. We're the only one on the block that had it happen. So I hated that it happened, but I love it that we made the investment and to see it pay off was pretty amazing. This is my leadership team here. So there's me. I've been with the company since December of 2011. Nicole Jewell, she's kind of our operations. She keeps everybody in line, including myself. She does our dispatch as well. She's been there a little bit before me. The president and owner of the company, his name is David Matlow. He started the company in February 2001. He was still going to Western at that point. And then just one of our techs, his name is Will Baker. He's been with us since 2017. We have a total of 12 full-time staff members. We're all, we all go to the same office. We're all in Bowling Green. There's a lot of IT providers. You call them and they'll just route you to somebody in India or overseas somewhere. We are Kentucky-based. We're just like you guys. And so that usually goes a long way. I'm here to tell you that Kentucky is under attack. I'm sure you've seen on the news of ransomware events. You guys, have you guys heard the term ransomware before? Basically, bad guys get into your system, they encrypt all of your files, and they say, hey, you pay us some big bucks and you can have your files back. And even if what they're doing is not only are they restricting your access to those files, but they have stolen your files as well. And so if you don't pay that ransom, then they're going to release all those credit card numbers, all those addresses, all those social security numbers unless you pay up. These are all major attacks that have happened within the last year or so here in Kentucky. Some of these made the news, some of them didn't. And I can tell you that there's a bunch more attacks that I know about that have happened here in Kentucky. Happens every month. We get a new call in just about Bardstown Connect. That is the internet provider for Bardstown. So someone who should have been, you know, on top of their game, they got attacked. They got breached. Orthopedic Institute of Western Kentucky, they lost all their health records. The city of Frankfurt got hit. I'm pretty sure that did not make the news. They did a decent job of keeping that hush-hush, but it was pretty bad. They lost a lot. The biggest one though, Taylor Regional Hospital, that was something like 10,000 medical records were stolen. It's terrible, it's pathetic, and it's really, really, really hard to stop these guys. IT and cybersecurity, that used to be the same person. You'd have an IT guy, right? They would take care of your stuff, right? Well, now, since, like, there's a good example is there was a manufacturing plant in Kentucky in Bowling Green. They got hit over the summer from the country of Iran. The country of Iran was a state-sponsored attack, hit this manufacturing company and wanted them to pay millions of dollars in ransom. And we had to come in there and clean up the mess. They weren't a client at the time. They didn't have, you know, they knew who we were, but we didn't provide services with them. But we helped them clean it up. They didn't pay the ransom. We were able to restore everything back, get them up and going in about a week. But every month, we get a call of somebody has been hurt, a community has been damaged, trust has been broken. And so we go in there and we clean up. But what I want to do for you guys is be more preventative. I want to be able to provide you guys with the simple IT support of, hey, you pick up the phone, hey, I can't print, you know, my printer's being stupid, or I don't know my password, to the high-level stuff of, we're going to keep you safe, keep you secure. So here's some of the things that we can do for you guys. We have a platform that does an amazing job of preventing ransomware. We haven't had any attacks at our company ever. We are a clean slate. The last time a client of ours had a ransomware attack was in the middle of 2018. They were out of Georgia and they didn't even have our complete toolset. They just, there was just a couple of things that we did, mostly about their phone system. They got ransomed, they lost everything. And so then we moved all their data into our data center and they've been perfect ever since. But we'll do your network security. We'll do your email security. Zero trust, that's kind of a buzzword in the cybersecurity field, really. What that means is we don't allow anything to run on our system unless we allow it. So if it's, if a virus malware, something bad comes through that our system has never seen before, and it could be something good, you know, you download something legitimate online, our system will not allow it to run unless we approve it. And we'll go through there. We'll, when we onboard you guys, we scan your network, you go out through your day, and we archive everything that you guys are doing, make a note of that, update the policies to where, you know, your billing software keeps working, for example, and it's not affected. So then we lock it down after about a week or two. And then if it's something our system has never seen before, it does not allow it to run. We have a reliable backup and disaster recovery. It's really, really, really easy to sell a backup system, but no one ever talks about the recovery time of that. We have another, now a client, they lost a whole bunch of data. It took them a month to get everything back. So our backup system is all about the fast recovery time. Everything goes to our data center where we have it. You wouldn't be, let's say this whole building burned to the ground. We would have all of your data in our data center and we would be able to have that data ready for you guys before you would even be ready to use it. So our response time of the backups, we take great pride in. We'll also assist with your cybersecurity insurance. You guys will probably have the package from KLC. I actually have a meeting in about a month, I think, with KLC leadership to go over their cybersecurity insurance. They've got a company that is helping them that is out of South Carolina. So I went to the president of KLC and was like, hey, man, we've got some good old Kentucky boys that can help out with this. So we're going to meet with them and get that going. And we also last, we want to deliver best-in-class service and support. We want to be able to be that IT guy down the hall on the phone where you can just call us, pick up the phone. We can help you. You can email us. And then once I've got all of your agents installed on our machines, you can actually open up a ticket just from your computer. Super, super easy stuff. We take great pride in our response rate. On average, we respond to a ticket within seven minutes and then the ticket is resolved within 15 minutes. We take great pride in that. Our technical staff is about six, seven people full-time and we're available 24/7. So what I've got laid out for you guys, this is basically phase one. There's some other things that we could certainly do down the road, but I was in here a month or two ago, did an assessment. And so this is basically to fill the biggest holes that you guys have, the biggest concerns that you guys have, to get you up and stuff on your insurance. That's where we want to start. So we'll provide the IT service. We're actually going to replace all of your network equipment in this building and that'll cover the city and the police as well, just basically everything in this building network-wise. That will allow us to set up our security toolset and the alerts. We'll do the hardening of all your desktops and laptops, server as well, to make sure everything's locked down and secure. We want to implement an Office 365 email system. I know that she's got a bellsouth.net address, so I would love to streamline everyone's email. I'm sure you guys have a website, right? Do you have a website?
I have a good one.
Okay. Well, you can still use that domain name.
We've got a domain name.
Yeah. So we can use that domain name, get you some awesome email addresses. That'll look a lot more professional. But then there's also a lot of security tools that come with that. And then we're also able to implement our backups. We'll back up all of your email accounts, that'll go to our data center. We'll back up your server, that'll go to our data center. And if you want to add, I didn't put it on here, but if there was some critical computers, laptops, and we can take just backups of those machines as well. So let's say you got, you got a police officer that's got a machine in their car. We can do backups of those daily. That laptop gets destroyed, no big deal. We've got all the data in our data center. We can reload the image on a new laptop. We'll show up with a new laptop already ready to go. So here's the pricing of it here. This is, there's a couple of pages to this. So if we just go by this on line item by line item, the top three line items is for the network equipment that will rip out all of your old stuff. You've got an old switch, you've got old wireless access points in here. You've got an old router. We'll rip all that out and we'll put in all new equipment. This is enterprise-grade equipment. And this also allows us to implement our network security toolsets. This allows us to put in the alerts and everything that would phone home to our data center. So something as simple as your power goes out, internet goes out, we'll get an alert for that. We'll probably know that there's a problem before you guys do. We can work with, you know, your internet provider, you know, if there's a problem on their end. Or, you know, bigger issues of, oh, I've got a security alert. You know, someone's laptop is infected and is trying to phone home, you know, to China or whatever. We can see all that traffic happening and so we can harden that. The fourth line item down, so this is in the quantity section, says quantity 16. So this is basically, when I was here doing the assessment, you guys had about 16 computers, laptops, all of that. Sometimes those numbers can be off a little bit, but we can just adjust that. If we're, you know, kind of too many or not enough, we can adjust that. And so that's really the support. That's our zero trust platform. That's VPN clients with 2FA. That's your asset management. We do Windows updates, which is always a pain. I'm sure you paint in on a Monday morning, you turn your computer on and, oh, look, it wants to do 30 minutes of updates. We schedule all that out to where that doesn't interrupt you guys. And we can even, you know, if you've got 24/7 patrol, you know, we can schedule around that and make sure it interrupts you guys as least amount possible. The next line item is your Office 365. So this is your email, this is your office apps, this is 2FA, this is email encryption. And again, the quantity 16, we can adjust that if we got the numbers wrong a little bit, but that is all that. Next page, the top, this is your two backup items. So again, quantity 16, this allows backup to go to our data center. We'll do nightly backup. We usually schedule those like at five or six, but, you know, we can change that. And then there's a 90-day retention on that. So I can basically go back in time up to 90 days. You accidentally delete something is what usually happens. You delete a folder out of your Outlook, we can go back in time and restore it. Then the last item there, that is an agent backup on your server. So that'll have a 30-day backup retention. And again, it'll go up to our data center in Bowling Green, Kentucky. And so there's a monthly subtotal. So that's the subtotal for our monthly services. That is way cheaper than what you could hire an IT guy for. And this comes with all new equipment as far as your network goes. So there's actually a lot of benefit in that monthly service. And then the bottom line there, that is just the one-time implementation fee. That's just, you just pay the one time. That allows me to pay my guys to come in here and, you know, we're going to rip out all your network, put all new stuff in, all the labor to get everything set up, put in the security measures, program the alerts, set up all your backups, set up your Office 365 tenants, your email accounts and everything. It's just setting everything up. This is for a 36-month term. All of our contracts are 36 months and we have typical contract like you would have if you buy a cell phone. There's nothing crazy or nothing surprises there. This is timeline. So this is just a quick overview of how it would look like, like today, I'm doing the presentation. If you guys agree, we would order everything once we get everything in our office, which honestly, we probably already have everything installed because we keep so many spares. We would schedule the onsite install and we're super flexible of when that would happen. So we don't, we don't want to impact you guys. You know, y'all are city government. You're making things happen for this nice community. So we'll do everything, schedule everything around where it's most convenient for you guys. And so we'll come onsite, we'll do the install, we'll send a couple of texts up here to knock everything out. And then about a week or two after everything is installed, the dust is settled, any kind of bugs, we got worked out, I would love to come up here and meet with you guys again, make sure everything's right, make sure we didn't overlook anything. If you've got any feedback, good or bad, we would love, love, love to have that. Phase two, if everything goes good, we'd definitely recommend a new server. You guys just pretty much have like a really old desktop computer. It's working really hard in there. We can also provide end-user cybersecurity training. We can do some cool things with that, some training with that. We also provide phone systems. So we can provide phones, dial tone, all that kind of stuff. And then we have some really cool things to where your desk phone is linked up with an app on your cell phone. And so even if you're not here, you can still get calls like you're in the office. That is really, really, really helpful with police. They all have that with our other clients and that's been a lifesaver for a bunch of them. Then you do have some old, you know, computers and laptops that we can rotate out. Usually we do like, you know, we schedule something out to where you do, you know, four a year or 10 a year, you know, whatever your budget is, we can get you on rotation and get everything going. So that's pretty much it. Again, I appreciate y'all's time. This is a paper copy of the quote as well. And so are there any questions? I know that was a little bit fast, but I don't want to keep anybody up past their bedtime.
I do have, do you have backup besides just what's in Bowling Green?
Yes, yes. We do have another site in Bowling Green. It's on the other side of town.
Worst case.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're good. Our backups have backups and then those backups have backups.
This is a little different. What, you're talking about the computers will be tied indirectly? What, I've got a laptop.
Sure.
Say I want to have a, I call it a screen. I've got them at my other places of work. We've got a system similar to this. And I've got a screen. I can sit at home and log on to my computer at work.
Yeah, yeah.
And I've got my desktop and I've got all my files and stuff here, email and all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
And then there's 12 of us out there, I guess. And we all 12 have our separate one. I can't get in anybody else's unless I have a...
Correct.
Password, which I do most of them. But then we have one file, we call it task drive, that everybody shares.
So right now, you basically have that share on that server that's here? You definitely have some options to, we could take that server out, move everything into Bowling Green in our data center and you would just VPN in. Sometimes, it really depends on what applications that you're using. Some applications support it, some don't. That would be like a separate assessment that I would do to see if, you know, okay, can we move the server to our data center, yes or no? And then let's say the answer is no. Let's say we can't move it. I can still provide you guys with remote access to it. And, you know, we could, you know, like the city would have their separate and then the police would be segregated off that and they would have their own little share if they needed it. That's really the easy part. That's no big deal at all. But that's something that I would recommend kind of to assess in phase two because the biggest holes that you guys have is the security. Like it's nonexistent. I mean, you just, you just don't have anything. So I kind of like to put up the fence, you know, put up the walls and then we can work on the inside. Is how I usually go about things. But yeah, we can certainly do remote access, whether that's remote access to here or remote access to our data center.
Well, I see this getting to a point like, Commissioner, if he has a tablet or something, he can have his agenda number that whoever got here can pull up. But then they could even have access to some of the Office 365.
Yeah. And that's the thing too. Your office...
Is it like all your Excel and your...
Yeah, it includes all the apps. And you guys really, you could, it comes with OneDrive. So y'all could use that if you wanted to. And then you wouldn't have to worry about a server at all, whether it's here or at my data center. And y'all can share files that way as well. You know, really just depends on how many files you have, how many people need access, how many different folder shares do you need? That is not a problem.
Well, we have, again, I'm just, and I'm not computer literate at all.
Sure.
But what we've got out there, like we have the one file that we all share. Because we keep some stuff on it. There's some stuff that all of us need access to, the calendar or, you know, stuff for everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
But then I've got mine where I can get on to our, we have a system called Plex that does all our...
Yeah, I'm familiar with Plex.
I hate Plex.
Most people do. Most people do. Yeah. There's a manufacturing company in Bowling Green where we work for these Plex.
And then I've got all my own files with the Excel and Word related that no one else has access to.
Yeah, yeah. And what we usually do to segregate, like anything that's on your desktop and documents is just you. No one else can access it. But then if you do have like an HR department, you know, we'll have like an HR folder and then just that group has access to. You know, it just, we can fit that mold. That's the easy part. The server here, it's on its last legs. I was actually surprised it worked at all. I was tinkering around with it when I was doing the assessment before and it was, yeah, it needs some help. But in my opinion, we really have to get that fence up first because you're wild.
I agree, Ross. We have. I thought everything was on the computer.
No, it's all on that little computer by the desk machine.
Yeah. It's a computer about this big.
So you all share it off there? Okay. I didn't know you did that.
And from what I could tell, there wasn't any backups on it or anything.
Backup used to be somebody would take one home with them. Still doing that.
Yeah. So all that would be automated. You wouldn't have to worry about rotating drives, people forgetting to take stuff on that. If you're doing it, that ends, that would end immediately. The first thing we would do is put in our backup agents, get that stuff going.
What's the difference on this backup and backing up to the cloud?
Well, so basically, it is backing up to the cloud, it's just we own the cloud. So if, let's say, this building did burn down, okay? I can have your data immediately. I would, you know, go into my data center and transfer it over extremely fast, drive someone up here. And here's your data. Where do you, where do you want to set up shop at? Let's get things set up. It would be immediate. Whereas a lot of other cloud backups, it takes weeks to get that data back. They love taking your money for it and they never tell you how long it's going to take when you need your stuff. And they'll be like, oh, yeah, you can get it back, no problem, no problem. It's really easy. Yeah, it is really easy. You can just watch it spend for three weeks. We were able to, so when the tornado hit, a lot of our clients were down. We had one gentleman in particular, he had a meeting at a hotel in Nashville and he had his PowerPoint. He saved his PowerPoint and he's got his own servers in our data center, saved it there. Well, his house didn't have internet, his office didn't have internet, he had access to nothing. So he called me, he's like, hey, I need this PowerPoint. I got to go to Nashville right now. And I'm like, no problem. I put it on a flash drive for him. He had it immediately. He had it immediately. So it just gives us a higher level of service that these, you know, big cloud providers just, they just can't do. They can't compete.
But if you're on your system right here, if something were to happen right here, I would still have instant access to it through my laptop, wouldn't I? If it wasn't in this building?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, if your stuff was, you know, saved on your laptop locally, yeah, you'd still have access to it. Or if it was in our data center, obviously that would...
It'd be on the server.
Yeah, yeah. But if, you know, if you've got a shared file that's on the server here, that server, you know, finally gives up and dies or, you know, something happens, a flood, whatever, then those files would be gone. You'd have to, you know, hopefully I'd be in there, you know, giving your backup back.
Right, no, I understand that. But I'm thinking if we were on a system like this though, if something happened here, Larry's laptop at his house, mine at my house, Shelly's and Mike's, they could all still access everything?
If your data was in our data center, yes. Yes.
Is that part of the phase one?
Yeah, yeah. So we would... So if the phase one piece is your network, is all those network security tools, that will give you VPN access to the server that's here, remote access to that tier. That would be, that comes with the VPN client. We can get all that set up for you. And so if those files are already on your server, then yes, you would have access to it. That is no problem.
What's the cost of phase two for them?
It depends. I would really like to get more in detail of, you know, what kind of applications you have, what can be... You know, if we could move everything to our data center, that's usually cheaper. But if you did need your own server, we would provide the server. We are a partner with HP Enterprise. I'm sure you've heard of HP. Well, about 10 years ago, HP split into two different companies. There's HP and HP Enterprise. HP Enterprise, they make all the servers, some networking gear, some other, you know, enterprise great stuff. So we could, if we need to, we can install a new server here that is actually a server and not just a desktop from Best Buy. And we would have, you know, redundant hard drives in it, redundant power supplies, blah, 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 you know, cool redundant things. All your data would be on that. It would be fast. It would be reliable. And then again, we would have VPN access to it if you needed it here, give or take, depending on how much... That's another thing too. Like it really depends on how much storage you need. But it could be anywhere from, you know, $250 bucks a month to $750 bucks a month, you know, give or take. It just kind of depends. But we would provide the hardware. That's part of that cost. And then, you know, backups and everything else. But we would love to work with you guys. There's a lot of IT kind of people here in Kentucky. None of them really have the security piece figured out. None of them really take responsibility for that. We run into so many times where they're like, well, we had an IT guy and, you know, we thought we were doing good. And then if an event happens, they're just like, oh, sorry, I guess you gotta pay the ransom. We take that responsibility. If you... If something did crazy happen, that responsibility is on us to make it right, to work with your insurance. We see that process through start to finish. But knock on wood, hadn't happened yet to an existing client. It's just we do a lot of cleanup for people who aren't clients. But then they turn into one.
After the 36-month contract, if we have to go a different direction, everything that you have with ours goes with us?
So a couple of different ways to go about that. Let's say you sign up. We put in all of our equipment. 36 months come to an end. You guys say, hey, we don't really like it. We would remove our network equipment because that's got our proprietary toolset on it. But we would certainly work with... We wouldn't just come in here and rip it out. We would work with your new provider. Make sure you don't have any downtime. Make sure that they put in their toolset, that everything is good and that's very cordial. It's never been a problem. Never been a problem at all. At the end of 36 months, you guys want to continue with us, you'll get new upgrades, new network equipment, and then, you know, anything else that, you know, maybe you've added on or bolted on. We can assess that, make sure all that's right and arranged, replace everything that needs to be replaced. The price will probably go up just because prices go up. But, you know, you would know all of that before, you know, getting locked in for another three years. You know, I would... Basically, I'd come up here and do this all over again. But we do ask for 36-month contracts because we do have a huge investment. We're buying all this network gear. You know, that's an upfront cost that you guys just don't have to worry about. But that allows us to keep the licensing up to date because we have to buy some... Some of our stuff is a monthly license that we have to buy. Some of it's yearly. So all the hardware and the license on your network is included. And it just makes things easier. Or it would seem like we're nickel and diming you on licensing every month.
Fire station next door was not hard. No problem connecting it in with it even though it's a separate building.
So that is a... I did an assessment in that. They had a network that was more or less just cameras. And then he had just the one computer. In my opinion, I don't think that's worth a huge investment in your, as far as the network go. But what I will do is if he needs access to the server here, he will have a VPN client, a secure VPN client on his machine that will deploy. And so he can connect in securely and, you know, access...
Just like anybody else would.
Yeah, just like anybody else. But I don't think it's worth the investment just for one computer to completely rip out that network gear and put it in there. That's not worth it for you. We can wrap around our security tools on the agents and the VPN client that we own installed on this machine.
What we would need to do then is just anytime he comes in to get signed, we just log on into this.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, the VPN client we use, it's really, really, really easy to use. And, you know, we'll do training on how to set up everything, how to connect, which passwords, how to submit a support ticket. We'll go through all that to where there is no confusion. And we make it as simple as possible.
But I could log into it from anywhere just...
Yeah.
Once I got in.
You can go to Florida.
New Orleans.
There you go.
That's where he goes, New Orleans. I go to Florida.
There you go. I've got a brother in Destin. He retired. He's retired Air Force, and he's got a guest house in his condo. So that's where I go. That's where you'll find me. And that's another good thing too, is we've got such a large support staff. You know, if you were to hire your own IT guy, you'd worry about vacation. You know, what if something goes down? He's out of town or he's sick. You don't have to worry about that. We've got the staff to support you. And that's just a non-issue.
Well, I'm betting that you have access to it from anywhere.
Yeah.
Like the Ampti or Bank of America.
Yeah, yeah.
They easily pull up a laptop and log on.
Yep. Easy cheesy, as long as you got internet. That's all you need. And it doesn't really... Our VPN client's really small. It doesn't even have to be really good internet. Just like decent and you'll be fine.
Well, you're good out there.
Yeah.
Okay. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. So I've given him a paper copy of the quote. I put her name on it, but, you know, it doesn't matter. Anybody could really sign it if y'all wanted to.
As long as she pays for it, I'm fine.
She was nice enough to...
That's not in my heart.
She was nice enough to stop by our booth at the KLC Expo. So that's how we met. We met a whole lot of other city governments. So that was fun. We'll be there every year now.
I hate to disappoint you, but she stopped at everybody's booth. This is her first time. She stopped at everybody.
That's great, that's great.
I'm having him around, so that's fun.
She went twice. She went around it twice.
That's fun.
I know. It's great.
That's great.
She had them all.
All right, so that's it. Any other questions?
Yes, probably, but not right now. I know how this goes.
I'm available. I've got a couple of cards here.
I wrote your number down.
You can call me, email me if you got any other questions. You know, we can schedule another call. I don't mind to come up here again. Not that far from where I live. Not a big deal at all.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Shelby, anything?
We need to figure out what we're doing at Christmas dinner. But other than that, no.
Our caterers not available anymore.
Say more. She not in anymore?
She's had another spell.
Recently?
Voice has had IDK.
They're not open on Mondays. We'd have to do it on different nights.
It was there last year.
Did they cater last year?
Ah, yeah. I don't know.
No, we went to IDK.
We went there.
But it wasn't on Monday, was it?
I know that, I don't know.
I don't remember.
Does Barb do catering full-time?
I think so.
I didn't know if she still did it. I know she used to.
Yeah, and I know that she has events and stuff at the Bed and Breakfast.
I don't think we have enough room there.
That's what I was gonna say.
I didn't know, but here...
Yeah.
That's what we're aiming to have Susan. She was just gonna do the whole thing right here.
Yeah.
Moonlight Caterers.
Moonlight Caterers.
Oh, I agree, they cater, okay.
But I want something where they're gonna come take care of it. I do not want Amy and Lisa and Shelby cleaning up after...
Greg Killer could come. And you ask him to have that, they never, like the president. You know, I know they do that for the Farm City Center and stuff like that. So that's an option. You could get in contact with him about it.
Y'all agree with somebody?
Figure out a date, and then I could go from there.
Just not December the 8th or...
3rd or 4th.
Well...
I can't be at the 1st or 4th. I'm gonna be in Louisville. I just saw that this afternoon when I was reading this. I apologize.
14th is another one. Because that's a Wednesday. We won't want to do it on a Wednesday night anyway. Okay. We were shooting for the 6th is what we were shooting for with Susan. I don't... Their dates may not...
I'll start with the 6th and we'll go from there.
Don't you think most people would rather do it here? Lot more room. Again, though, I just want somebody to bring it, set it up, and when it's over, clean it up. I don't want any more staff to do it. Mike?
All I have is our car that we've been declaring surplus. And Larry, can tell you a little more about that car?
2012, wasn't it?
2012.
2012, Dr. Charger, our newly elected constable here in, certainly in our district, is asking about Steve Epley.
Epley.
Steve Epley. We called him, got a, you know, an estimate of what it was worth. And, you know, the price of someone up there is $35,000, which is, you know, right about somewhere where it needs to be. You know, plus he's gonna be serving our area. We have sold one in the past to the, I guess he was the past.
Past constable.
So, you know, we did declare surplus last month. We had to ask the city to make it official, sell it to the constable.
Was he okay with that price?
Yes.
Does he have a form of motion?
Yes.
I make a motion, we're gonna have to sell it to Steve Epley.
We have a motion and second any further discussion. Those are favor seen by the House saying. And then motion passes. Are you done? David?
The projected completion date on the fire truck is December 19th. Is the projected completion date on it. That being said, it's getting close to the time to get rid of and whenever to replace it. Especially if you have this whole, you know, surplus now to advertise for sale with the way that the people comes in. But you'd be thinking about pretty soon on getting rid of that truck. When it arrives, we gotta...
How long does it usually take to... When you advertise a surplus to get it going? We don't want to get rid of it until the new one gets here. That's why our...
Right. You know, we could shoot with... Trucks can be pushed back. We'll probably get to January 1. So we can go ahead and start the process of taking pictures, get the truck cleaned up, get everything lined up, put on good deals, that's what we're gonna put it. And we can start it two weeks or three weeks prior to January 1 and end the sale at January 1.
That's why I was asking, do we need to do it tonight or would we be better off waiting till December meeting to do this?
Probably get things rolling then.
Okay, that's why I was asking about a timeframe as far as...
Of course, once they finish, it'll be, we'll have to go down and do a final discussion and prove it after that.
Do you need me to go?
Do it.
You need me to go?
Sure. And then at that point, it'll be.
Where's that?
Florida.
What, what part of Florida?
Bradenton.
I noticed in the minutes it said the projected end date is November the 28th.
They got it pushed back.
So, that's what I was asking, so that's what I was wondering with the talking about.
I'd say with Christmas and everything going on, you won't get it before, after, first of the January.
Yeah, and that's kind of where.
Do they deliver it, or do we have to go get it?
They should deliver it. There's options there, you can, we can get it driving up, or we could have it delivered. I personally have abandoned them delivering it, the simple fact that it's, it's not on the road, it's not us driving it, it's on their transportation, their transporting it. That's not they do, that's my opinion, I just think it's a safer route.
Was it purchased, not purchased that way, to be delivered here?
I have to read a little bit about that, I'm not sure on what that part was.
I'm thinking it was, I think we talked.
Who'd we all been in the bid, have you?
So, I make a motion, we may start the process of getting ready to bid it out.
Well, just might, have to make a motion to surplus the old one.
And surplus it.
In a second.
Can you get Shelby all the numbers she needs to put in the minutes with the truck? Okay, I have a motion, second, any further discussion? Those are favor, same, five, I'm, post saying, motion passes. You anything? Yes, ma'am.
I hate hearing this.
I understand, it's a little on the loud side.
My name is Jason Posey, I have a property up on Will School Road, and I'm cleaning property up, and it's completely, I think it's 70 feet long, I've got a couple of tires and nothing, but I have the speculation of a crime, that property, and I'm starting on the property up the street, and I have four hundred and five, but this half property is really getting, and I was trying to draw there extended time that I can try to get this property to have a 495, just to go.
Okay, now, what you've cleaned up already is on, would be on the south side of our school?
Back up to the, a little, a little.
On the, okay.
Last, last.
Okay.
Part.
Okay, so it's already cleaned up and finished?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're talking about property across the road?
No, sorry.
You're talking about the other property across the street from that?
Across the street, up the street.
What kind of timeframe is on it right now?
The end of this timeframe, I don't know.
Seven days, it's, it's a long process.
When was the first done? First NOV violation?
On the current one?
On the one, the piece she's talking about, yeah.
I have to look in the files on the 20th of that date. The one that she's on right now is a citation, do you remember what that is?
No.
September?
That was, the citation was received in September, right?
I'm sorry.
That means that it had been a while. Well, what's, what's, how's everything stand right now? It's out of date, so it's just a matter of?
Yeah, it's just, I, I live in a much, I'm trying to go back and forth, I, I took three people to do this all day, but I just didn't do it, and so now I'm trying to come back and forth and get some on the board, some on the way to get the, we gotta, I mean, we gotta start, this, this one's had a little, get it done, this one's had to be done, and I have no idea how long this, I mean, I'm doing this quickly, it's a.
Well, right now, the citation's already been in effect, correct? So, regard, I mean, regardless of if it was done now, it's still a citation on it, right? I wish AV was here to.
Yeah.
To guide us a little bit, our attorney. I feel like we need to wait and get his, AV Conway's our city attorney, and he's normally at these meetings, and tonight, he just, Larry somebody called just a while ago and had something come up, and he's not made it back to Louisville, from Louisville yet, so, let, let's talk, let's talk to him, and then we'll get back with you, because like I said, right now, it's not gonna make any difference if it's not cleaned up, it's still not cleaned up, so, we'll go from there. Thank you.
I'm glad you're making the effort, thank you very much for that, by the way.
Right, you, anything?
What'd you find out about the cafe, the parking lot behind the cafe?
He'd never missed a bag.
Okay. It's getting ready, yeah, that's what he said, and it's getting ready, being nasty season again, and lots of stuff going on downtown.
As I said, Brad, we got a phone, 144, said any word on when you'll be ready.
We've been waiting on them since, what, July?
Yeah.
August?
Yeah.
Because we had to rush to do that one drain.
Yeah. Is this paved in it, or is this what?
Concrete.
Concrete.
Mm-hmm.
We started to be quicker.
How's it moving along a little more?
Huh?
How's it get him moving along a little more?
Hollis.
Should've been done that, I don't know.
He's working it. I mean, he's just covered up, the only thing he can do is try to find a different contractor. But he's, he's that good, he's that busy, so.
Well, reach out to him tomorrow, and maybe call on him, now, does he respond to calls, or is he, I prefer text.
At half time, let me get the way he says to him again, see if he answers since this nighttime.
Okay, because I, I wish that had already been done, and I've, I'll kind of drop the ball on that, but not asking you.
Well, no, we've been, trust me, I've been asking.
You've, okay.
October 25th is when I've been, we was waiting on bigger stuff, three, six, depends when we hit on, heard a word about them, so first October got done, so October 25th is, is when we started, you know, trying to move things along, so.
Okay, and I think that, that, that's all.
Sorry.
We may need some more gravel in there, because I don't want people getting out in mud puddles.
We're gonna have to do some drenching down there.
Yeah.
I should've done today for rain, and hit some light.
It's probably gonna need some gravel anyway, for the concrete, but I mean, I know they'll be raining.
I don't know if anybody knows, but we've talked, there on First Street where pond water is easy to run, I had to put in like a V-shaped pro, assemble waters and flush it, so it gives it church.
Yeah.
So, there shouldn't be no water standing when we're done.
That'd be good.
Costs a few extra dollars, we'll be doing it in the morning.
Yeah, because it's a nasty parking lot.
Okay.
Well, since we got the, we're, Pickleball's wanting a structure built down there, and I don't think we're paying for it, I think they're paying for it.
It's donated.
Donate, but they want to put it, if you get asked, they want to put it on the court, on the edge of the court. To do that, they'll have to drill a hole through the blacktop, pour concrete to do it, and I don't want them doing that. And I've been pretty emphatic about it, I do not want it on the court. So, if you get asked, and somebody says something, you can say Kevin said.
Kevin's the bad guy.
And I'm the bad guy.
Would that not take up space, that thing?
They want to put a, a, a overhang so people can sit in the shade, which is fine, I understand that, but if we have to drill a hole in the blacktop, we just paved that.
Yeah.
And like Larry said, they just, and I've got pictures of, they just had all those tents and those covers, every one of them tore pieces this past weekend with that, or the weekend before last. And if that was to, a big wind come and jerk that, it would pull blacktop and all right out of the ground, and I don't, I don't want to tear up what we've already got, we've done it, we've got a lot of compliments on what we've got down there, and I don't want it ruined. No offense to them, I want, I want them to have what they, what they can get, especially this is free for them, and I, I do want them to have it, but you know.
I thought it was a storage building, they were gonna build.
That's what I thought, too, but I got, after I talked to Larry today, and I contacted Mike afterwards, it's not a storage building, it's just a basically a shaded area, it's probably a 10 by 20.
A dugout kind of thing.
Yeah, just a dugout kind of thing, where they can sit in the shade. Well, you don't have to be on the court to sit in the shade, you can sit outside the court. I mean, I hate it for them, but I just don't think it, if we ever want to have a tournament, we couldn't put bleachers in that spot, we need to, you know, and there's different things we'd, we'd have to do, and I just don't want it, I'd rather have it outside the court and affecting it that way, so.
You told me just now.
Tell me.
Did you get with me?
Oh, boy, that's good. All right, but that's all I've got, I really don't, I don't have anything, I don't have other than that.
All right, I've got one thing, I gave you all drawings, we've been talking about the, this is on 231 down by the railroad track, with some of the, it'd be some of the ARPA funds, we're looking, the whole thing should come in. Larry, any idea on the railing?
On the cost?
Um, like?
Are, are we building it?
Well, I feared we would.
The metal is so volatile right now.
It is high.
Other parts I get today.
No, I know, but do you remember what this was down here?
I don't.
And is it gonna be on both sides of the road, or just one?
It is, it's both sides of the road.
Okay. We've already got the approval from the state, all I gotta do is fill out the permit, and we're talking about stuff we're trying to do as far as tourism and people coming into town, and beautification, and dressing up, and I just think that would be a huge change, and.
Is there a cost estimate on this?
Brickwork's about $13,000.
And you don't know about the other stuff?
I have to price on us, I'll steal. I'll get pretty good.
I would be, too, because it'd probably, like you said, it'd change tomorrow. I mean, it would look, make it look better down there.
I think it'd make a huge difference.
Do you have any length on it?
You did, didn't you?
I think they're on the, on the.
Is it cheap when they're linked?
I haven't got my glass on. My poor eyes can't read it.
Well, I can't either.
That's bad, you're the youngest one in the.
Yeah, I got nine, five glasses.
I got a phone on you, don't you?
Oh, I do.
I don't know that it has a.
Turn on your camera.
Yeah. I don't know that it has a dimension on this drawing. I've got one that does.
If you send it to me tomorrow.
I will say it's about 35 foot, because I think all those are about seven foot long. Six or seven foot.
It doesn't say, uh, it's easy, does it?
That is good to know for a glass.
I just think it would tie in with everything else we're doing down there.
Is there something stronger, maybe, I can't.
It's, there's no dimension on there.
Oh, okay.
It says one antique or something. Yeah, that's way too blurry.
Well, I've got, like I said, I've got another drawing that goes with it, I just printed out these, because to kind of get the detail and then the.
It says blurry.
The drawing.
I can see about everything, but.
No, it's not actually something.
It's a one or two.
I can read something that says top of something, but I can't tell what that's top of.
If you can send me the drawing with the measurements, I might know exactly what's still the, the length, I guess I'm good to go in and order it?
Well, if they approve it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, do we need to go ahead, without knowing the prices, should we just go ahead and say, go ahead and do it, or?
I don't think it'll be, I mean, like I said, we've got the funding to cover it.
I'm fine with it, I don't have a problem, what do you got you saying, what do you think?
No, no, I'm good, I think it's wonderful.
I do, too.
Michael Bill, Rick Park, you're talking to him.
He's the one gave me the estimate on it, and I think that's gonna be on the high side, because I think he, he was talking about using the veneer, but I think on the, and again, it's not on this one, but the drawing I've got, I think the state's approved the full brick.
I don't think I'd like the veneer.
I think the brick would be a lot better.
I like brick better.
He just said the veneer was more expensive to install.
Really?
And probably not much more, because we've got brick veneer, we're doing some work at the house with the brick veneer, let me tell you, stuff's not cheap.
I just think the real brick would last longer.
Well, the real, and I think he was thinking about ease and weight, but I've got the approvals, because I said, we had this designed, our, well, RBS designed this, Chairman I did, before he left over there, and it's been to Frank, to Frankfurt, and they've approved it all, because I got approval ahead of time, even if we didn't do it, just because I didn't want to go to a lot of time and effort, if everyone looked at and said, no.
Water District?
Yeah.
Water District.
Water District.
And you know, with bits going back in, projected for over some thousand, going back 1.8 million, or.
Oh.
It's way, that.
As far as that part of the field, they won't be built.
That was, that was originally.
Wait, y'all, watch.
Yeah, I like it.
I'm not saying he's gonna make a motion.
I make a motion, we proceed with getting this done.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion?
Where's this bridge, what is it?
Down here, there's a crosswalk, or not the crosswalk, there's railroad tracks, on each side of the railroad tracks.
BDM builds upon the railroad tracks.
Can I show them this?
Oh, I don't care, it's got the old concrete abutment, and it's got that gray pipe.
Oh, yeah. See, it's gonna look like that.